All right, our protections here. I think we should start without him. Okay, at 7:01, I shall call the meeting of the zoning board of appeals, the village of Bartlett, counties of Cook, DuPage, and Kane to order. Please call the roll.
Joe Bano. Bob Bacaro.
Speaker here.
Guy Papa.
Here.
Michelle Suarez.
Here.
Charlie DeVoe. Mike Wearden.
Here. You have before you the minutes from the May 7 meeting. Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Bob. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Guy. Please call the roll.
Joe Bano. Oh, it's very touchy. Bob Bacaro.
Yes.
Guy Papa.
Yes.
Michelle Suarez.
Yes.
Mike Wearden.
Yes. For tonight, if you are going to speak and you are not the petitioner, we have forms on the podium there. You can grab one and just fill it out. That way, we don't have to swear you in separately. First item on the agenda is case number 20-09, 1070 Dartmouth Drive. Are the petitioners present? Please come up to the microphone there.
Good afternoon.
Wife going to speak too?
I'm Paul Shesny, the person that...
Hold on, hold on just a second. Are you the only one speaking, or is your wife going to speak?
I'm the only one speaking, yes.
Raise your right hand. Do you soundly affirm that the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
Pavel Shensny resides at 4962 North Mason Avenue, apartment floor two, Chicago, Illinois.
You can pull the microphone, then you're at the bend on. Okay?
60630.
Okay, go ahead and present your case.
Give me for a moment. We are asking for a zoning variance regarding a privacy fence and installing a solar thermal, solar PV installation in the yard. This property happens to have a very unique outline versus the others. There is a, there is a school and, and a park that's adjacent north of the property. And parents and various other people come and pick up their children and drop them off when they, when they go to school. So during the school year, of course, not lately as much at all. And so that entire, that entire cul-de-sac is filled with vehicles and people waiting and parents waiting. And so we are asking to raise the height of the fence to provide privacy to a six-foot height. The other thing that we are asking for is to be able to install a solar photovoltaic ground-mounted array. Yes. The, I guess the big difference there is typically a homeowner wouldn't have to go through the variance. They would be able to install it because the yard would be behind their house. In this case, with the, with the way the lot is shaped, we're going to be putting the array, or we are asking to put the array off from the side of the house. One of them is going to be a north, northeast corner, and the other one will be directly east. We want to structure the system in such a way its height would be five feet and six inches, so you wouldn't see it from, no one would be able to see it, but that would only be the case if we are able to raise the fence. There is a, there is, the regulations here in Bartlett are such that you cannot put the solar array on your roof if it's facing, if it's facing a public street. So therefore, we would only be putting a few solar modules on the west side of the house, which is not, it was right there in the picture.
Back.
Yeah, so that, those solar modules there facing west don't require any variance. It's the fact that we would be putting the ground-mounted solar array. That's the thing that we are asking to do that is outside of normal, well, norms.
I want to clarify, it isn't a Bartlett regulation that they cannot put solar panels on the front face. That is an acknowledged requirement. If they do, the homeowners association, but it's not an acknowledged requirement.
Okay.
Then it would be mounted on anywhere on the roof.
Okay, got it.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's, that concludes what I wanted to say.
So essentially, the entire fence that you have on your property now, you're wanting the whole fence to be six feet?
Yes. Right now, the fence is, is about three feet height, so.
I was out there and took a look. Now, you have bushes in the back that are along the gas pipeline right-of-way. Would those bushes stay, or would they come down?
They, they, the bushes that are facing the back, those would stay.
Okay.
But we are open to removing them if that's what you'd like.
No, I mean, I think if you look along that right-of-way, that is a very wide right-of-way, and it's quite a distance to the path that goes along there. Is this kind of like a drop-off point, you said, for a lot of students?
Yeah, this entire, this entire sidewalk, the lawn and the street, the street will be filled with cars and some people, and then just people will be congregating there along the, along the fence side that we can see in front of us, the one that goes all the way around the cul-de-sac, and a little bit there as people are also filling the pathway that goes through the school.
You have a very unique situation. We, we kind of liberalized our view on fences earlier this year, but we still don't like something right along the sidewalk where people are walking and could be a potential hazard for somebody hiding behind the fence for a robbery or jump them or whatever, although if you're six feet high, I guess it would be harder for them. But it's going to look a little bit odd in the front. Did you get any calls on this, Roberta? Any comments about, like especially this one?
I received three phone calls from residents who had some concerns about the fence being that close to the sidewalk. No one had a concern about, no one stated a concern about the ground-mounted panels, but they did say that sidewalk is very heavily utilized, and they were concerned that having the side, the fence that close to the sidewalk could potentially be problematic.
But nobody was concerned with the front yard having the fence that high? Along Dartmouth, not, Dartmouth Lane, I guess it is, not the court?
Well, they're allowed to have it.
Right there, that one?
The part of the front permitted to be six feet tall.
Okay.
It's more along Dartmouth Court here where it's the issue with it being the six-foot tall. That's where their concerns were, along the sidewalk.
Okay.
By me? Can I speak? I mean, by me, we speak on my own property.
Or the owner?
No, I'm, I just want to leave this.
Well, hold on, we, wait till we open it up to the public. Any questions on the, from the...
So I have a question for staff. The bit about the fence being to be six feet from the bike path that connects to the bike path behind them.
Let me go back to the Plata survey.
Okay, so that, yeah, up in that corner. So where the fence currently is, which is next to the bike path, is that where the new path would, the new fence would be?
They're proposing it in the exact same location the current fence is.
And that meets the six-foot setback?
From the property line, yes.
I, I would like to say that, 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 that fence, that is the smallest portion, which is 12 feet in width over there, which is at the corner right there, if maybe we could alleviate some of the concerns, if we move the fence closer this way, east, that would make a, you know, you'll be able to see clearly then what's around the corner.
Up where the bike path is?
That's correct.
Okay, well, I have two questions. In lieu of what Christie just said about panels being able to be anywhere on the roof, even if they're facing the street, is it such in the sunlight distance and all of that? Now, you're the contractor, I would take, is that right?
Yes, well, the, my business partner is the owner of the house.
Okay, so with the fact that you can put the panels anywhere on the roof, with that now clarified, is there room on the roof suitable for successful panels other, so that you would not have to do the...
Once, once the lady mentioned that there is actually no rules against putting solar modules on the, on the, on the roof, I actually remember we contacted the HOA, and it was their ruling that that's not what they wanted. We downloaded the, I'm sorry, the lady gave us all the rules and regulations, and it doesn't specifically actually say anything against solar modules, but it's, she said that the solar modules are included as part of any equipment installed on the roof. But otherwise, yes, it is suitable. It's not a lot of room. I did the design work for that, and we would be able to fulfill about a seventeen, seven kilowatt system. Right now, on the small portion of the roof, we, we have about two and a half kilowatts, and the remainder of eight and a half kilowatts is the ground-mounted array.
So they, they did not specifically say you could not do it?
The lady said that they think of solar as major equipment installed on the roof, and you cannot have that facing the, facing the street.
Okay, I mean, I don't have a big issue with the solar panels, ground-mounted. Regarding the fence, was there consideration made for a four-foot fence, which would meet the ordinance in place of the current three-foot fence?
So the, the, the same concern that people are raising about not being able to see around the corner is also the same as the homeowner, as you stand there. So, so we stood there in different vantage, vantage points and so forth. And maybe a five-foot fence would actually provide a much, much better, you know, safety and security, but it just feels like you're sitting in front of, you know, like you're on a show, you know, where you're the one playing the guitar, and everybody's looking at you when, when this happens. And this happens almost every day during the school year. That's, that's the biggest, I think, not having the privacy.
Okay, and, you know, I truly understand the unique shape of the, the lot. But was any consideration given to move the fence away from the sidewalk? The ordinance says 10 feet. Was any consideration made to move it away from the sidewalk any distance, rather than right on the lot line?
Yes, and that's why I just mentioned if we move the fence away from the, in that one portion, if, are you asking me over the entire property line?
Yes, yes.
We have not, we have not discussed that, but I think we can do that right now really quickly, if you can give me a chance. Maggie?
Roberta, I just have a question regarding the, the solar panels. Since it has no regulation as far as Bartlett goes, are we even okay to vote on that? Because they're still going to have to follow the HOA regulations. Should, is that something we should strike on the application?
So the village, we do not enforce covenants, so that is a separate issue. If, if, if they are more restrictive than the village, that is part of his covenants, and that is on the homeowner.
Right.
So we make them sign when they apply for a building permit. We make them sign a disclosure statement saying that they are aware that they need to contact their homeowners' association and their regulations, and they need to follow them.
Right. They're asking for a variation to allow the ground-mounted in the corner side yard, which we don't allow. We require them to be in the rear yard, so we do have to keep that. It's part of the motion.
Right.
Thank you.
Sir, to go back to your question, if, not sure if that would make a difference, but if we could, if, you know, if you move the fence like two feet away from where its current location is, if that would, you know, help at all ease the, ease the concerns of the other citizens?
I mean, my, my feeling is, I, much like what some of the other residents evidently expressed, was being right on, especially on the sidewalk, around that curve and along the other side for a little bit, being right there and being so high, I think both aesthetically and while somebody, as far as safety, and they couldn't be on the other side of the fence, obviously, but they could be at the corner, the lowest corner where the...
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
You know, and somebody be hiding there, and you wouldn't even see them. And if it's set back at least two feet, I, I just, I think that would be somewhat of a compromise. And I, I understand why it can't be 10 feet, because that would take it way into the yard.
And, and we maybe would be able to further alleviate those concerns if that's a small, smallest portion, if we actually moved that something like eight feet or 10 feet, and that would completely give someone a clear sight.
I mean, I find, I would find that more appealing, and, you know, less of a variance than what you're asking for, I guess.
Yeah, sure.
It's still a variance, but...
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I would agree with that. I think you need to pull it in, just from a safety standpoint, thinking that there are kids walking there, so it's not necessarily the height of an adult trying to see. So you've got children and, you know, bikes or whatever else might be coming just to...
So I would like to reiterate, just so that we are clear on what we're discussing. So the fence along the public sidewalk there to be moved two feet away from where it is right now, offset by two feet, and then we would be moving that smallest fence that's adjacent to the bike path by 10 feet.
Right, the, the top, they're moving that in.
Okay.
So the two feet is the entire length of the sidewalk on, on both sides?
Yep.
And the eight feet is up by the bike path going to the school?
Yes.
Eight or 10?
We, we would prefer to do eight.
Eight?
Yeah.
Eight feet would be fine.
I heard you say 10, I'm sorry.
I, I'm sorry, I might have said 10, but...
Eight feet in from the bike path?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And two feet along the sidewalks?
On the side.
Now, what's that going to do for your placement of the two arrays?
It won't have an impact in terms of its placement. It will have an impact in terms of production on the system itself. That's something that, you know, we're willing to, willing to work with.
Okay.
Would be happy with that outcome.
Roberta or Christie, would that panel in the, on the left toward the back, is that kind of allowed, and the other one is not? Is that the problem?
Technically, neither one, there, this is considered the corner side yard all through here. The rear yard is only back here. This is where they would have to put the panels, according to the zoning code.
I see.
You can't see that on the, on a Plata survey, but there is a patio there with a lot of trees right there, so we, we wouldn't be able to install the array right there. It would be, it would be under a tree.
Am I reading this right, that the one in the back is 19-6 by 10 feet 4 inches? And the other one looks like...
14-7 by 10-4.
Okay.
That's correct, sir.
How high off the ground are those?
It would be five feet and five inches. That's the high point of the array. The low point of the array would be 18 inches off the ground.
You still could have some damage to those if kids are playing around there, hitting a ball, or...
Most definitely. It would have to be a rock. A solar module can withstand an ice pellet, one and a quarter inch in diameter at 90 miles per hour. So it'd have to be like a really hard rock.
Do we have any panels anywhere in the village that are on ground level?
I don't, I don't believe I've ever reviewed one, no.
Okay. Any other questions before we open it up?
Back to the, I'm sorry, but back to the two feet along the sidewalk. I believe there's a tree at the corner where the two sidewalks meet.
Yes, there is, yep.
Is that going to pose a problem for that tree?
Give me a moment, please. So that tree would, might be very close to, or its diameter might be within where the two feet is. That's something we would have to take into consideration, see maybe we have to move it a little bit further. So...
I also just want to clarify. So their property line is actually one foot in from the sidewalk. So that means they're only truly moving the fence one foot in on their property line.
So the current fence is not on their property?
It's probably one foot in, if I had to guess.
Right, the, yeah.
It appeared to be right within inches of the sidewalk.
It could be six inches, but...
Six inches.
Typically, the property line for most lots in the village is one foot in from the sidewalk, typically. So I just want you to be clear that he's moving his sidewalk, I mean, his sidewalk, his fence, one foot in from the property line. Are you, if you're okay with that?
Just two feet from the sidewalk, approximately.
Yes.
Yeah. My concern is how far it is from the sidewalk, how much space there is there. I'm sorry, you said these solar panels are how high?
I'm sorry?
The solar panels are how high at their highest? I haven't seen anything ground...
Five feet and five inches.
Five feet and five inches, okay.
Any further questions before we open it up to the public? At this point, I shall open the meeting up to the public. Does anyone have anything to say? Okay, come forward.
Mike, we have evidence of the public...
Oh, we forgot, yeah, the evidence for the mailings, the newspaper, and the sign. Mark those exhibits A, B, and C. Turn in, turn in your, your sheet to Christie, and then she'll call you.
Monica?
Afternoon, or evening. My name is Monica Zakszewski. I live kind of like across the street, one house down from this property. I've lived at that location almost eight years now. I've, right there is my house, right there. And I've observed many things throughout the years, which I've contacted the village about. Biggest problem is with the school. Obviously, I have three kids. They go to the school there. With the parking, all the people driving around. I mean, the cul-de-sac, technically speaking, you're not allowed to park there during school day from 8 till 2. So no cars can park there. But like from the whole Dartmouth and the turn in here, tons of people parked there to take that little shortcut there to pick up their kids, because the bike path is right there, hey, yes, behind the property. And so everybody cuts through to the play yard to pick up kids from school, basically. Tons of cars parked there. I've observed numerous times people reaching over their fence, because they have a little dog, picking up the dog, throwing, I have observed kids throwing trash into their yard. I've observed tons, I've observed drug dealing on that cul-de-sac, which also contacted the village about, and they're aware, you know, the police, obviously, and all that. So I've seen a lot of things, and to me, I mean, I don't see a problem for them to have a bigger fence, just because obviously it's such an odd shape. There's no like cross-traffic there for cars to drive. There's no stop sign there where any obstruction of view for vehicles would happen there. People walking, like even that little corner, I mean, everybody along those houses in the back pretty much have the high fences, even across the cul-de-sac, the corner house has a six-foot fence, a red six-foot fence. And there was one time last year that the president was walking around through the village and briefly spoke with him in regards to the property and the properties he's observed and, and all that kind of stuff, and asked him about it. I was with her one time, and he said, "I don't see a problem that, you know, you would be able to do a fence here." I do see that there, I mean, this is obviously an existing fence that they bought the property with. I do see people walking around. I see people even in front of my property, I mean, dog poo all around. They just leave it. People don't pick it up. That's why I'm even, you know, I recommend people installing cameras, because it's ridiculous. I mean, people are just cutting through. There is no privacy. Everybody's like in your business. I mean, even if she wanted to go and lay down and tan, or put up, you know, a little mini pool for a kid to swim in, she has a daughter, she can't do that. There's just no privacy whatsoever, at all, at that property. All the other houses around, if they want a fence, they could have it, and it's like, why did they even put a cul-de-sac in that corner in the first place? I don't get it, because, I mean, that, that's the way I see it. And so I support her in, in that decision. And again, I've seen many times people reach over, pick up the dog. One time, I let my daughter walk around to play. I didn't feel safe for my kids to stay there, because there's just too many people walking around. I've seen cars in that cul-de-sac parked for hours waiting for someone just to come from that bike path back there, and when nighttime comes, to come to this car. I, I never felt safe leaving my kids there in the yard, because you never know with people coming around snatching kids. Is someone's going to come and snatch one of my little kids from there? So, I mean, I fully support it. I don't know why some people would come and say that it's a problem, for example, about the sidewalk. I mean, I know tons of people in the area, and I don't see a problem at all. And especially the biggest thing is, like I said, people walking with dogs, leaving poop nonstop, and it's like, they leave it on the property. You got to clean up. I mean, I don't, I don't see a problem at all with it being, you know, at least a six feet, because anybody could climb over. I've seen kids after school jump over to try to catch the dog running around in the yard, which I would run out, you know, when she was in the house. I'd be like, "Hey, you know, they're trying to catch your dog in the yard." So, I mean, that's, that's the way I see it. I don't see it as a safe place for her to have her child go outside and play just because it's high traffic with tons of people walking around constantly. I mean, my property there, they're constantly pull through, you know, my yard, my, my apron to cut across just to go there. So, and if I were to tell you the amount of poops I had to pick up, no offense, but, you know, not, not the main concern, but that's the way I see it. And solar panels, that would be great. It'd be great if more people would have solar panels in Bartlett. I mean, I've seen them quite around in a lot of locations. I'd be maybe thinking about it at my property if I decide to live there the next 10 years, so. That's about all I can say.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Okay, so I'm just trying to clarify the, Christie, could you show the survey? And you can zoom in on that a little bit, you can do the magnifier button. So the property line is through the middle of the bike path currently shown on this plan, right? And right now, Christie, how far is the fence shown in from the property line?
The fence is about six feet from the property line itself.
And the bike path is, how, how wide is the bike path?
Like five feet or so?
That's what I'm thinking. So again, I just want you to be aware of when they say they're pulling it in, how far it is actually. So the, from the edge, east edge of the bike path, please tell us how far you are looking to pull that fence in? So when they come in for a permit, we know exactly what we're looking at.
I first have a question, I'm sorry to not answer, but are you saying currently that the fence is past its property line?
Bike path is half on your property. The bike path is, is split down the middle, is on your property.
In an easement?
In an easement.
Got it, I understand, okay. I'm sorry, because it doesn't look like there's a bike path there. You know, it looks like that, that where the fence is, it looks like it's the property.
Right, because they, because the easement was recorded after the subdivision.
Understood.
Was created. So the previous owners for your lot and the one next to it granted an easement to put the bike path on there once Sycamore Trail Schools was built.
Got it, okay, I understand.
So how, for the fence, how far from the bike path are you willing to locate the fence?
Edge of the bike path?
Yes.
We, we are willing to move the fence eight feet away from its current location.
Okay.
But I can't tell you right now how many feet away from the bike path that would be, not off the top of my head.
I want to say measure that it was, it was a foot, it was one foot off the bike path. So if you're moving it back eight feet, then you'd be nine feet off the, at the bike path.
Well, it's questionable how much we can negotiate, we're not like the plan commission.
Right, right. I, I just want to make sure that it's clarified what, what they're saying and, and there's a difference between from a property line and from a path. I just want everyone to be on the same page.
I think the concern is the bike path, so you almost need to continue to talk about how far from the bike path. Because at this point, if the property line's in the middle of the bike path, that's kind of irrelevant, the bike path is already over that, right?
Bike path is what?
Over, it's already over the property line.
Yes.
So you really want to concentrate on from the edge of the bike path, because that's the concern, where people are.
Right.
So we're talking, we'd be then in nine feet.
And this plan before you shows it off of the bike path, and my question was, how far is this plan showing it currently off the bike path? And then he's wanting to shift it even further, that, that's what I.
Currently, currently the fence is right up against the bike path, just like it is up against the sidewalk.
But there's kind of like a rocky or uneven area or something right in there, as I recall.
There's actually a huge boulder.
Yes.
On their property. But the, the fence is right up against the bike path.
You would fence the, the boulder outside of the?
I, I am, I am not sure, but I don't think so. If we move it eight feet, it still would be right up against the fence on their side of the property.
Yes.
You wouldn't see the boulder.
Well, procedurally, they can change their plan at the meeting, is that right? Or no? Without having to resubmit?
Technically, no. I mean, their request is before you tonight as it is. I mean, that's.
We, we pretty much voted up or down. The plan commission is the one that can negotiate things.
This doesn't go to the plan commission?
Right.
Right. So their request is as it is. What we've done in the past is, if they, if they want to vote tonight or recommendation tonight, you can do that, or we could continue it and we could work with the homeowner. Or they could resubmit a new request. That's how we've done it in the past. There's really no negotiation.
The optimal thing, if, if we do a continuance, is they could still come back next month, right?
Exactly, yes.
And it could all be done.
Yes.
Conceivably.
Or we could say no and the village board could say yes.
That's true, too.
This has some major hurdles for us. Is there somebody else that wanted to speak?
Not for this, no one else turned in a slip for this case.
Okay. Any other comments? I realize that the lot has a very odd configuration. I, I don't like setting a precedent, although we're not bound by precedence, of having the panels on the ground and having this fence so close to the sidewalk. Especially now from what is being said, there's a lot of traffic there. It just, I'm uneasy with that. I like the idea of continuing this till next month and coming back with a redesign that you work out with the staff. I don't know how feasible that is, but it certainly is an option. And any other feelings before we go to any type of vote?
I kind of, I agree with you, just from all the confusion and discussion, just to have something cleaned up to resubmit next month if possible, if that's what the board feels, that's kind of what I'm thinking as well.
One, one problem, this is a seven-member board and we only have four people here tonight. It takes four for a quorum. So we need to have, however we vote, whatever type of recommendation we pass on to the board, it needs to be unanimous here. If it is not, then it is simply a roll call vote, which is not taken as seriously.
Okay.
I don't, I don't necessarily have an issue with the solar panels in there. I mean, I, I understand you're trying to work within HOA's regulations and, you know, do these things. For that, one of the reasons for that matter, I actually like the idea of a six-foot fence. It's, it kind of cuts the visual from the outside in, you know, then it's just to the residents and that's, you know, your design of your own home. I would like to see this redesigned to bring, bring that fence in, especially if you're going to that height and we're gonna, you know, think about that, because now you do have even a bigger safety issue. But, you know, personally, I live on a bike path, too. I understand the concern and feeling like you are on public display and understanding that there are residents who don't necessarily have an appreciation for private property and that fence is part of private property, so I get that. But I, yeah, I would like to, I think, see it just kind of put together, a little solidified to say, let's, you know, go this height, this far in, you know, and just solidify the numbers.
I think we all agree on the six-foot fence, I think we all like that, we just wanna, we also believe it should be pulled back and want to see it.
I mean, I think in theory, everybody's in agreement with moving forward with the project, just getting some of the details down.
Yeah, and I think part of it, too, to look at, the fact that you don't have neighbors here opposed to you who have to look at it. That makes a big difference. If we had people yelling and screaming, we hate this idea, we have to look at it, well, then it's like, okay, then we don't want to go for it either. The fact that it's, you're kind of riding the fence, so to speak, and don't have a lot of people opposed to you or strongly for you, we can go along with something, but this is a hard one for us to swallow, being so close to the sidewalk. I, I personally would like to see us vote to continue this next month and have you talk with the staff and have something that we could digest a little bit easier.
Okay, my, my question would be then during this period, during this period of time for the month, will be, will we be able to communicate back and forth to put?
Oh, yes, with the staff, yes, yes.
Okay, as opposed to just, you know, submitting only, and, okay. All right, great, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Is that something that, okay, so, do I hear a motion then?
I'll make a motion for that.
Okay, so, so we have a motion to continue this, or how do you want it, word continued or table it? Continue it for one month with an urging the homeowners and their representative to talk with the staff, negotiate something to pull the fence back from the sidewalk? Is that pretty much what we're saying?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. At this point, I have to close the public hearing portion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been, been moved by Guy, seconded by Michelle. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Bob Picaro?
Yes.
Guy Papa?
Yes, sir.
Michelle Suarez?
Yes.
Mike Wharton?
Yes. Okay, so we shall look forward to seeing you next month, I hope. You should be able to work something out with them that would be more palatable for us, so that you would get a positive recommendation to the village board. Okay, yes?
So you move along, that's moving the fence, two feet towards the inside, right?
Yes.
And they can bring their, their bike path. What about from the, from the back, from the?
I think along the, when you look, that is a wide right-of-way, and I don't think there's a problem with moving that fence in. I, I didn't see a problem. I took pictures. And the fact that you have a school over there anyway, it's not like you're backing up to somebody's yard, all right? That is a wide stretch in there, and even the bike path, or whatever you want to call the path going through there, is much closer to the school than it is to you. And so I don't see a problem with leaving a six-foot fence along the backyard. I mean, did, anyone else?
They're allowed to have the six-foot fence.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't think we, I don't think, I think we would be out of line demanding that you lower the fence in the backyard. I don't think that's necessary. Plus, you have the bushes there, it's, it's gonna be more.
Asking, does it need to move in?
No, I don't think so.
One more question. If that's the only concern with the fence, is there any way we can just revise our plans and submit? So, because if we go down the road within one month and then there's another board meeting, so if we have to complete the project, we would need to winter pack or anything.
I, I think after a meeting next month, you could get it on the village agenda pretty fast, right? And in general, they go along with our recommendation, I, I mean, they're not bound to, but, and that's the purpose of having the public hearings. So I wouldn't necess, I, they would not continue it to even farther months down the road.
Because we meet early in the month.
You're being delayed one month.
They have two meetings a month, so they have another meeting later in the month as well, so.
The problem is by law, if we vote you down now with a negative recommendation, it takes two-thirds of the village board to override us for that, even though we're recommending. So you're at a strong possibility of not getting anything, all right? I think this is a good way to compromise, to say, we're uncomfortable, make us happy and we can pass a positive recommendation onto the board. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
And by doing that, I think they realistically, especially with the contractor, be able to break around mid-September. I mean, there's a strong possibility of that.
Oh, yeah.
So, next month.
Okay, great. All right. Stay in touch with them and, and have something that's feasible. They have a good idea of what we're looking for?
Great, thank you.
Okay? Okay, now, if I, okay, why, how do I get this to come back up? Here we go.
Kind of hard to believe it's August already.
I know. Okay, the next item on the agenda is case number oh-two dash eleven, nine hundred Poplar Lane. Are the petitioners present?
Yes.
Please come up to the microphone. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly affirm that the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth?
Yes.
Okay, do we have the mailings, the newspaper article and the picture of the sign? Mark those exhibits A, B and C. Dave, please state your name and address for the record.
Dave Berry, nine hundred Poplar Lane, Bartlett.
Okay, go ahead and present your case.
Yes, thank you. We've lived at this address for thirteen years now. It's an odd-shaped lot, and we don't have, well, first of all, the first variance we asked for is for a change in the setback for the rear yard. We became aware that we weren't a conformity when we spoke to the stone at the village planner. She said that in case of a catastrophe, there might be some problems rebuilding, so that's why we included change in the setback. The reason we came was for, we wanted to put a shed in our side yard. It's a odd-shaped lot, as I mentioned before. The backyard is, is an easement, is utility easement. We can't build on a utility easement. That corner is the only logical place we could put that lot, put the, put the shed. The shed is going to be eight feet by twelve. And we're asking, oh, this lot, there's a similar lot, two doors away from us, that approximately ten years ago, the former owner put a shed in on the side. The village granted a variance in that matter. We need, we need a shed to store, after thirteen years, we acquire, acquire things and tools and small equipment, and we like to use, take that out of the garage and put a lot of that into the shed, so we continue to using the garage as a garage.
Go back to the picture again, like satellite view or whatever it is. I mean, if you look at that, you can see how odd the lot is shaped anyway. And I, I went out there and viewed this one also, and from a practical standpoint, that's the best location for a shed in your yard, provided that no neighbors object to it.
No, in fact, no one contacted me. In fact, the neighbor to the north, Mr. Charles Wilson, and the neighbors behind us, the, the parks, they've written letters in support or objection to this plan, and I submitted those to the.
Okay, we're gonna mark this as exhibit D. A homeowner overlooked the plans and has no objections to it, and it looks as though it's signed by.
There's two homeowners, two different homeowners.
Okay, two different letters, okay. Exhibits D and E, okay? And I think that, that makes a difference when the people that would be looking at it or nearby don't have a problem with it.
They don't have any problem.
I mean, when you, when you look at that corner, it, it's hard to say, is that the backyard or the side yard or both? I mean, you're at a point there, your property is virtually a triangle, not a square or rectangle.
Right.
So it, it's hard to say, what is it? You know, what's the backyard? What, what property line are we looking at? We're talking about a shed. We're not talking about something attached to the house, which is taboo. You have to be away from the house anyway.
Right, right. And the, the property line, the shed, back of the shed would have, along that northern edge, there's a six-foot fence there already. So the neighbor, the people that live there wouldn't be really, they might see the top of it.
It's their fence or yours?
Their fence.
Their fence, okay.
They put that up about two years ago when they moved in. They have two small kids. And we're trying, you know, the past thirteen, we're trying to keep this property up. We've put a lot of money into it. We've replaced the siding, the roof, replaced the kitchen, upstairs bathroom, we have a new driveway, garage floor. We're trying to make this, we like living in Bartlett, and we want to make this a place to stay. Have any questions from the...
What building materials were you planning for the shed?
What, what, it's kind of like, this is a shed. We saw this at one of the big-box stores. The neighbor behind us, she has one very similar to this, that, and it would fit our needs. And we'd paint it a color or colors that would be compatible with the neighborhood, with our house and surrounding villa, you know, house. And we'd probably put plants on the, you know, to hide it from the street or soften it from the street.
So for the record, it's a wood shed that you would paint?
Pardon?
Is that a wooden shed that you would paint?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the board? I'm sorry, would you finish with your presentation?
Okay.
No, I mean, you can still stand there. I kind of interrupted you, I...
Okay. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Well, considering the shape of the lot and considering the easements around the house, there's really no other choice. I mean, I, it, I have no problem at all with it.
No, I don't either. Okay, anything from you?
No, I would agree. I think that shed also looks very nice. I think it would add to the property.
Yeah, I think it'll be enhancement. And as I said, when I was there, I thought, where else would you put it? It would block your view, and that's a high fence right there anyway, so the neighbors aren't objecting, and you already have that evidence here. At this point, we'll open up the public hearing portion. Anyone in the audience? I guess not. Did you get any calls or concerns about this?
I did not get any calls on this one.
Okay. Any further comments or motions?
I'll make a motion to pass a positive recommendation to the village board for 20-11, 900 Poplar Lane. The variance for the eight-foot reduction, the rear side yard, to allow a shed in the side yard.
Okay, at this point, we have a motion on the floor. We shall close the public hearing portion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Bob, seconded by Guy, to pass on a positive recommendation. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Bob?
Yes.
Michelle Suarez?
Yes.
Bob Picaro?
Yes.
Mike Wearden?
Yes. Okay, we shall pass on a positive recommendation. Stay in touch with Christie to find out when it appears on the village agenda.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You're welcome. Good luck with everything. Okay, if I can get back to my agenda. The next item on the agenda is case number 20-03, True North. Are the petitioners present?
Yes.
Please come up to the microphones. I guess we could say plural, right? Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly affirm that the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we have the evidence of the mailings, the newspaper, and the picture of the sign?
Yes, we do.
Mark those exhibits A, B, and C. For the record, state your name and address, please, and then present your case.
Tim Shoemaker, RTM Engineering, 650 Algonquin Road, Schaumburg, Illinois. For the petitioner.
Todd J. Stanton, President Design Perspectives, 1280 Iroquois Avenue, Suite 110, Naperville, Illinois 60563. I am the landscape architect for the project.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. The owners apologized. They had a plan commission meeting that they were previously committed to, and they couldn't make it. They did, they do have a video to introduce the company that we'd like to share.
Sure.
I know, I'm trying to turn that off. It won't turn off. It won't turn the pen off. What are options?
True North was founded in 1999 with a family-owned light company. It's an equity joint venture with Shell Oil Company. The light company, now known as True North Holdings, has been in business for over 100 years, with both the third and fourth generation leading the growth and the development. True North now has over 140 company-operated stores and 185 dealer stores. We represent Shell in various major metropolitan areas across Ohio, Michigan, as well as the Chicagoland area. As a company that is now over 100 years old, I am proud to be the CEO and continue to build upon the culture formed by generations before me. We are proud of the culture we have and the pride ourselves in being involved in the communities we serve. When we go to a community and invest, we want to be an asset to those communities. While our developments are accretive to tax revenue, provide construction and retail jobs, we also pride ourselves on ensuring our developments fit within the communities we are entering. We keep our stores well-maintained, well landscaped, safe and inviting. We are proud to provide both fuel and convenience offerings to the residents of the community we are privileged to serve. We look forward to serving you, and hopefully, your community can be the home of our future True North development.
True North is highly selective when choosing the home of each of our gasoline and convenience developments, using community attractiveness and strategic fit with its brands as the selection criteria. The True North brand is positioned as a premium brand, which aspires to achieve quality through all we deliver. The materials used to construct the facilities, overall appearance inside and out, fuel and convenience products provided, and great staff deliver fast, friendly, and clean service to each of our guests. True North's latest prototype features a 4,200-square-foot contemporary building, primarily composed of natural materials, utilizing brick and limestone on all sides. The fueling forecourt usually includes six to eight gasoline dispensing units with the ability to fuel 12 to 16 vehicles simultaneously, covered with Shell's globally recognized, modern, but clean canopy image. Clean LED lighting is used on both the interior and exterior of the facility. All surfaces are composed of concrete with no asphalt used on site. We use strong, often more expensive, materials in our developments, but believe the additional investment upfront pays for itself in terms of delivering a representative identity over the long term. Accordingly, we are proactive related to maintenance and capital reinvestment. We also have a philosophy of keeping our locations contemporary and relevant. As we speak, we are completely remodeling sites we built new less than 10 years ago.
Through its company operation, True North provides fuel and convenience retailing to guests at approximately 140 locations while providing fuel to another 185 independent dealer locations. Through all of the knowledgeable, hardworking, and dedicated employees, we offer each guest the fattens, friendly, and clean stores. We operate our True North locations where they're own-staffed, not through franchisees or independent operators like some national or international convenience store chains. This allows us to maintain a high bar related to standards, policies, procedures, and control of our operations. We have a script for nearly every square foot of what should be in our stores and how it should look down to the bathroom and informational backboards. This culture ensures we're successful in delivering our brand promise. Our stores are adequately staffed and the staff are well-trained, always delivering what we call a True GX, or guest experience. It is quite amazing to see some of the loyal relationships that develop between our staff and the guests and the communities where they work. Let me show you around the store. We offer a wide variety of gourmet, premium, true brew coffee and cappuccino with a full assortment of creamers, so you can make it just like you do at home. We have 20 flavors on the found lineup with chunky and chewy ice in either a plastic or foam cup, whichever you prefer. We also have a wine assortment of other refreshments, including your favorite traditional or craft beers in our North Pole Beer Can. If you need a sandwich, you could always find something which hits the spot in our grab-and-go cooler. And our restrooms are not your typical gas station restroom. They're tiled throughout and always kept clean. We even earn mom's approval.
Thank you. So we're seeking to define truck stop establishment in the village code. We need that in order to apply for a video gaming license with the state. That is a requirement of the state of Illinois. Our other variance is that we're seeking to reduce the number of interior parkway trees along the main frontage. And the reason for that is, if you look at this, if you're driving down 25, we don't look a lot like a gas station. It's, if you're not paying attention, you're gonna miss it. So we really don't want to hide it any more than we really have to. We've provided extra landscape feature at the entrance to the village. Yeah, thank you. To enhance that feature at the corner. And what else we've...
Well, I mean, it is on the gateway plan, so we work with staff to design something that would be attractive both for the village as well as the applicant. So we do have cut stone, ornamental trees, different types of shrubbery, ornamental grasses, perennials. So it will be, you know, really a focal point of the design to northwest corner of the property.
That, okay, so that, that part is at the northwest corner, not...
Correct.
Down from the intersection.
Correct. So in terms of the variance requested for the, really the trees along the north property line, the west property line, there is about half of the amount that you typically would see as far as the code. As Tim mentioned, that is sort of deliberate by the applicant to provide tree canopy that's short, that provides visibility into the property. It's pretty much their standard operating procedure. So we're really not providing as many trees as you'd like to see, but there are trees that run along both the north and the west property line. Spaced out, sort of random spacing. The design mimics the video and the different imagery that was shown, I believe, at the plan commission. So that is really where we are in terms of just the one variation required for the four trees on the north and I think there's four trees on the west, in terms of deciduous shade trees or evergreen trees.
So what is that on the north end? Is that, is that another street?
This is West Bartlett Road.
Why don't we, Christie, why don't you just do a brief overview for the board? Let her describe a little bit of the site plan and how it's laid out and the traffic patterns on it for you.
Okay. I see it now, okay.
So this is located at the southeast corner of West Bartlett Road and Route 25. Benchmark Lane already exists with a right-in, right-out onto Route 25.
And that goes right down to Benchmark?
That goes all the way to Benchmark, right. This is a right-in, right-out located right here. The developer will be putting in a cross-access easement off of West Bartlett Road, which will be right at the property line. There are going to be future improvements on West Bartlett Road, which will basically make this a right-in, right-out access point as well. Vehicles will have to, let me go back one. So there'll be a right-in, right-out in between the two lots, shown here. If cars are wanting to make a left onto West Bartlett, they would either have to make a right onto Route 25 and make a left, or go to Southwind to make the left. Let me jump back to the site plan. So passenger vehicles will utilize the fueling stations at the north side of the building, and trucks will be able to utilize the canopy for the diesel pumps on the east side of the site. There are two truck parking spaces provided, which is required to be as part of the truck stop establishment. So they do meet all of the parking requirements that we have. Let's get to the landscape plan. If you recall, this property is located within the West Bartlett Road corridor plan. This is part of the western gateway. So we require a lot of native plantings, much more detailed landscaping requirements than what we have throughout the rest of the village. So the petitioner has bulked up the amount of landscaping at the corner, but like they said, they are requesting to reduce the amount of trees that are required along the north and west property lines. There are not going to be any parkway trees in this location due to the overhead wires along both West Bartlett Road and Route 25. So the landscaping you see on the site is the landscaping that will be proposed. There aren't additional parkway trees being proposed along 25 and West Bartlett. There will be ones along Benchmark Lane to the south. Staff is working with, staff has some concerns about the access point on Benchmark closest to Route 25. That is going to be discussed at the plan commission meeting next week. They are requesting a special use permit for packaged liquor, for a convenience store with gasoline sales, an automobile sit station, a truck stop establishment, which will all be heard by the plan commission next week. Yes, reviewing the photo mesh of the plans. Yes, Mike?
Southwind and Benchmark are both village streets, correct?
Correct.
And West Bartlett Road is a Kane County highway right there?
Correct. And then Route 25 is I-DOTs.
Right.
So there will be a bike path installed along the north part of the property, and there will be an 18-inch berm that's required as part of the West Bartlett Road corridor.
Now, I'm uncomfortable with the tree reduction, but there is an issue with wires, and we've had a problem in other portions of the road with trees interfering with the wires.
Right, but that is in the parkway. So what they're asking for is separate from the parkway trees. It's the interior parkway. So this is within their property and isn't that close to the power lines.
Okay.
So could, that's the landscape plan. Can you blow it up a little bit? So there's five trees in that area that's being proposed to be put in.
Correct.
On the West Bartlett roadside.
Correct. And we would normally require how many?
I believe we require nine in that location.
Correct. So we're four short.
Yes.
I, I guess I, a couple things. In the petition, on page 50 of our packet, the convenience store, this is, well, your response was, "The convenience store use is not compatible with landscaping across the front of the building. Landscaping in this area encourages loitering and lording that is detrimental to the immediate property."
They were originally also going to be questing a variation for, to eliminate the foundation landscaping. They have worked with staff to put in planters in front of the building, so they meet the intent. So that finding was in regards to foundation landscaping.
Okay, that explains that. So the concern is that you're not gonna see the building. Is that right?
Yes.
Now, the landscape plan calls for those trees to have lower branches, no lower than six feet. So you're driving down the street. I don't see how trees with the canopy above six feet is going to hide the building. What's gonna hide the building is the gas pumps and the canopy and the pillars.
Do we have just those types of trees? I thought we had multiple.
So the tree, the five trees that are shown, starting from the corner to the access drive, is we have a Japanese lilac, we have a, which is a small shade tree. We have a service berry, which is the next one, which is a large ornamental tree. Then we move into a magnolia, which is a small flowering ornamental tree. Then we have another Japanese lilac. And then the last one, just south of the sign, is another service berry. So we have two small deciduous trees. So, we have two small deciduous trees, shade trees. And then we have three ornamental trees, two that are sort of larger ornamental trees and one that is more of a flowering tree. So, those are the five trees that are depicted across the frontage of Bartlett Road. So, the concern is, the codes allow some flexibility grouping them. I think the applicant would be concerned about putting in large trees like maples and honey locusts that grow 40, 50 feet tall, that spread out 40 feet, that sort of block the canopy and the building that set back quite a ways, and then also kind of change the character of the landscaping that was depicted in the video that was shown, I guess, at the last meeting.
We're not just talking about when you're up against the building. It's when you're further down the road, being able to see it, you know, so you have time to change lanes and approach it and things like that.
Okay, so that's along West Bartlett Road, then what about along 25?
So, those, there's actually two trees in the gateway. Those are ornamentals, but I don't think those really count for the frontage. But we do have three shade trees. I believe we have two maples and then I, let's see, we have two honey locusts and then one maple. So, those are a little bit larger. But once again, the focus is really more towards the, the north and the west. These are, you know, to the west and to the south. So, I think the primary concern is visibility from the intersection and then the frontage of Bartlett Road, not so much 25.
Northbound, I think you're gonna see it. Southbound is gonna be the harder to see.
And what would we be looking at normally along 25? How many trees?
I believe we need another four. Four?
There are seven required. Along, there are seven required along 25.
And we have three. So, once again, four short, as far as the quantity.
I believe there was the comment that the ordinance requires larger trees than what's actually going in.
Right. Half of the trees that are required, so if you're required to have nine trees, at least five of them must be large. The other four can be the ornamental or the smaller shade trees.
And this is the West Bartlett Road corridor requirements?
This in particular is actually the, the standard landscape ordinance that all sites have to comply with.
Okay, so, if I could ask, what is staff's take on this? As far as?
We have not had a landscape reduction request previously. For this, we've had requests on the foundation landscaping, not on the interior parkway reductions.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's a beautiful building. I mean, you obviously run a great operation, and considering Bartlett is, you know, very much appreciated. This being West Bartlett Road, I, I like the cluster in the corner, but this kind of being the gateway, I, I guess I'm struggling with the extent that a couple more trees would block, block the building or block passerbys to realize that that's a gas station.
So, one of the things that, working against us, if you zoom in, there is obviously substantial easements not far off of the curb line. So, you know, under traditional circumstances, we would be able to probably easily accommodate grouping these trees a little bit easier. But if you, if you zoom in with the bike trail, which eats up a good portion of the frontage, our width of the planting bed area is really constricted. So, if you zoom in, you can see-
You can't zoom in anymore than this. I wish I could.
So, if you just look at the planting bed edges, the little scallops that go in and out, we're almost right at our, well, we are almost right at our, our property line. The rest of it, moving north, is all of, really much an easement, right, Tim? As far as the bike path-
Bike path and berm and utility easements.
So, if we had 25 feet to work with, I don't think we'd even be here talking, but I think that width is less than 15 feet, maybe even 10. So, it's a very constricted linear pathway. So, the trees will be lined up like soldiers. I can't really move them north and south. I have to move them east and west. So, the concern is, is that if we put four more shade trees in, it will sort of act as a, a picket, even if I have some flexibility with staff. 40 feet on center across the frontage, we're gonna be having trees in between each one of these trees, for the most part. So, it will basically create a vertical screen with the larger shade trees that would be proposed. I think the other side may not be quite an issue, but I know the, the frontage, just because we have the different utility easements and then the bike path, it doesn't give me a lot of green space, believe it or not, to work, 'cause we're not going on the other side of the bike path.
From a prac, from a practical standpoint, if either road is eventually widened to five lanes, how much is it going to eat into the landscaping?
Okay, that is not in the plans.
We're, we're pretty far back. I don't think you're gonna hit this landscaping.
Okay.
That widening.
I, I just wanna, I just wanted to say that I'm not a landscape architect, but from what I can view from the landscape plans is that the trees that they're providing on West Bartlett Road are what we would consider ornamental trees. And I think if they were willing to compromise and provide maybe two large shade trees and substitute some of the ornamental with that, you know, maybe staff could work with that. It might be a good compromise. But we're getting no large trees along West Bartlett Road. And I think that was part of our review, that, what we were looking for.
Well, and since that's the gateway, and our motto is progress with pride, we don't, we're not South Elgin across the street. We want it to be a, a different landscape to be obvious when you come into Bartlett, especially our gateway. West Bartlett Road is the north-south dividing line.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but speaking of the width, it looks to me like the berm buffer easement, where the berm is, is 10 feet, and next to that is a 15-foot path easement before you get to the path. So, am I?
The path is in the middle of the path easement. So, I think you might have 11 and a half or 12 feet of green space.
Plus the 10 on the berm.
Right, the 10 in the utility easement that we really can't plant anything in.
So, in, so in reality, if the pathway wasn't there, I'd, I'd have 25 feet of green space to work with, which would give me a lot more flexibility to, to adjust things north and south, which would not make it look so linear.
Like just a wall of trees.
Yeah. So, by cutting it in half with the bike path, it really forces this sort of very linear landscaping, even though it'll look like there's a lot of green space, which there is, from the path to the north to the street. I don't know if you want to show them the 3D perspectives that the applicant put together, which would give you a little more definition of what it would look like. So, as you can see, the perception is, there's a lot of green space here, but in reality is, pretty much at the edge of those planting beds is pretty much the end of their property as far as what I can plant, and the rest of it is all easement from the trees to us. So, in reality, if that was all plantable or green space that I could use to plant, I could push those trees much further towards the road, and it would, it would create these corridors that the applicant is so concerned about. But you can imagine, if I put in four more trees in between these, suddenly, that perspective changes dramatically. So, I think that's what their real concern is, is that these trees would be double that size, and you can imagine if I had a tree between these two that was basically double that size, you wouldn't see the canopy, you wouldn't see the building, 'cause it's so far from the road.
Okay, what if you had, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, kind of, sorry, I feel so muffled. Kind of piggyback on what Roberta was saying. I think, I would feel comfortable with the number of trees you've got, but to see some of these, you know, like, looking, if I, looking straight ahead, that there's a small green tree, not the flowered one, the one to the right of it, yeah, that one. If that was a bigger shade tree, so you're not putting more, but replace that with a bigger tree, even if you had to move it over a little bit to make it, you know, look more pleasing in the space there. But, you know, just putting a couple bigger trees in there in place of the ones you have. I like the look of this, but it, it, I understand, and I understand what you're saying about it looking linear, but I think if you replace some of these with bigger trees, you wouldn't get that linear, because you're not like, you know, one after the next, it'd almost create a wall.
Right, and that's, I think, their concern is-
So, I, I understand trying to get away from that, but I think putting the bigger ones in would be a nice compromise in that we bring some synergy to what we have in the rest of the village.
Tim, do you think they would?
Yeah, I, I think we can swap trees, but can we adjust the spacing a little bit and maybe group them a little bit more? Or do we have to keep that real consistent spacing? Okay, okay. Well, the variances for the number-
Putting bigger trees in, you'd almost have to, to make it look balanced.
Okay, okay.
And that's exactly what I was gonna ask, you know.
Yeah.
Keep the reduction, but to get something closer to our ordinance as far as the size of the tree.
Sure, okay.
With at least some of them. I like, I like, you know, the other ornamental trees are very pretty, and we have those throughout the different corridors, but you, you just do want some of the bigger ones. I think it's a beautiful building, though.
Yes, it's a very nice plan.
Thank you.
I, I think we're all concerned, though, because of the West Bartlett Road corridor. I mean, we have the, the streetscaping, the lighting, east of 59. We want to see things continue to develop, looking nice along West Bartlett Road.
And we're gonna match the light poles, and we've got the enhanced native grasses and bushes and stuff.
That's gonna look nice. Any further?
Well, so how does this work? So, how do we proceed? I mean, the-
If they're just gonna swap out the type of trees, that's fine, as long as we keep the same number. So, their, their request was for a reduction in the number of trees, as long as we keep the number the same, they can work with staff.
And, and the way we worded the variation request, it didn't actually, in the public notice, it said, "Just to reduce the number of trees." So, it was very general.
Okay. So, we can have that as part of the recommendation to work with staff?
You can do that.
Any further comments? Okay, we need to open it up to the public? Obviously, there's not a big section out there. Any further discussions or recommendations?
Okay, I will, let me find the beginning of this.
Or we could ask Roberta to do like they do with the plan commission to help with the wording of the motion. No?
I think, you know, Michelle said it very well. If we substitute two shade trees for two ornamental trees along West Bartlett Road, on the West Bartlett Road corridor, I, I think that would suffice.
Okay.
All right, so I'll make a, a motion to make a positive recommendation on 20-03 True North for the reduction in trees in the landscaping plan and to work with staff regarding the type of trees.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor at this point?
Text amendment with it or as a separate motion? For the truck stop establishment?
We could do, it can be together, can't it?
Together.
Okay.
Yeah, we haven't talked about that. So, the only reason to call it a truck stop establishment is for gaming?
Gaming.
State of Illinois requires that you be a licensed, how do they word it? Licensed truck stop establishment.
Okay. So, regarding the motion, that includes the text amendments?
And it's defined in your packet, the truck stop establishment, according to the state statutes, and it, it has to be, have diesel sales, it has to have 10,000 gallons worth of diesel sales in a month. There's parameters there that define a truck stop establishment.
Three acres.
Three acres in size, yes, and they, they meet all of those requirements, so.
Okay, so you're not gonna have any problems?
Not trying to go over that either. We're trying to, you know, just meet, meet that.
Meet that.
We're not trying to create a large truck stop by any measures.
Right. So, in South Elgin, the Prairie Station is a truck stop establishment. I don't know if you knew that.
Across the street diagonally.
Yeah.
Kidney corner.
So, is that motion clear, or do I need to change it?
I think, he, he needs to add. You, you need to add the trucks, the text amendments.
Okay.
You need to add that.
So, let me start over. Recommend a positive recommendation to the village board on 20-03 True North for a variation in the number of trees required in the interior parkway. The number of trees on the landscape plan will stay as is. The petitioner will work with staff on the type of trees. And to define in the text amendments, the truck stop establishment, to add the truck stop establishment to the list of special uses in B4 zoning district.
Sounds good.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Bob. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Michelle. Any further discussion?
No.
I think this is great. I hope, I wish you guys good luck on it. Hope it goes well. Please call the roll.
Yes.
Guy Papa.
Yes.
Joe Banoff.
Joe's not here.
Oh, sorry. Bob Bacaro.
Yes.
Mike Wernin.
Yes.
Thank you.
Work well with them, keep our, give us our trees. Good luck with everything.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if I can get back to the page one. What else do we have? Old business, new business?
So, for new business, we wanted to let you know on our website, we now have a development app that people can go to and see what's going on within the village. Let me see. So, it shows a list of the different projects that we have gotten applications for. You can either scroll down to the left, and it will take you to the 7-Eleven that you've seen, some of the other proposals that have come in. It's not coming. It's, oh, it's not working. It's showing up great on my screen.
And that'll include residential development?
It does.
All, all current development projects and the status of the projects are all on this map.
Oh, it's on the different screen. I hate this.
And it's already been utilized, what we found out, that a Facebook group adjacent to the proposed True North development used our, our map and our site plan that was posted on here for True North, they utilized it on their Facebook page.
Culvers.
Nice.
So, it's, so here's for True North. So, on a Facebook page, people were talking about this. People actually directed them to this site to say, "This isn't a huge truck stop. It's a small gas station that just has diesel fuel and is meeting the regulations." So, we're hoping this helps answer a lot of questions. When people see the public hearing notice signs, they can look at this and get an idea of what projects are proposed.
Good, good.
So, we keep it updated with our GIS staff twice a month. Hey, I don't know if you guys know about that or not.
Well, with all the houses going in, in South Elgin at 25, or just west of 25, and with the recent addition to residential in our village- with the recent addition to residential in our village in that, near that intersection, it would seem to me, my son lives in South Elgin, just a little, by the high school or down by the, the middle school, I guess. And it would seem to me that that area is prime for either South Elgin or somewhere to have a, some shopping, a strip mall, another pizza place, or, you know, a grocery store.
And, and we hope with True North, if it passes, that just east of it, I don't know, Kristy, if you could pull it up on the map?
Yeah.
That the owner, the property owner, he, he wants that to develop commercial as well if he can. So, we, we do hope that happens. Yeah.
Right, so we have to set the standard with the landscaping.
That's right. That's exactly right.
I, I was prepared to trash it if they didn't go along, so, but it, it's kind of hard when we only have four. We have more clout if we have.
Right, right.
Yes.
Unanimous.
So, you can see on this map, there's, there's the True North site, and then there's, that's Parkland Academy, Parkland Prep Academy that's under construction now. So, if you ever drive by that and you didn't know what it was, now you do.
But everything north of West Bartlett Road, that's all industrial for us?
Yes.
Do we have any potential?
Well, it could be actually, right there by Miles Parkway on that curve, that right there is shown for commercial. So, it could go commercial. We would actually like it to go commercial.
Yeah.
Right. Bring in the L-Sex.
Right, right before you enter into the industrial zone, you know, those, there's a lot of workers there. They could use a place to go to lunch.
Mm-hmm.
That'd be nice.
Right.
Yeah, this is great.
And, and, well, as you know now, we'll have a meeting next month.
Next month.
We have another case that just got submitted today.
Oh, yeah, that's right. We have another variance, yes.
That, that light was such an odd shape. Remember, I was just shocked. I mean, the only thing, who cares about the back property line? That could be in the light.
So, Moore Brewing hasn't given up, have they? I mean, it's just a, with the pandemic-
I think they were focusing on their Huntley location. They just opened up that new one in Huntley.
Which is huge.
Right?
Right, and, and COVID hit and-
Yeah, one of them was shut down for a while, I think, in Park.
Oh, yeah. I think I'm allowed to say this, I hope. They are closing on the property next week.
Oh, great.
Awesome.
Yes. Was it in the same room? Okay, I can say it then.
But the Huntley location looks like it's been pretty busy from, I live out that way, so, there's always, there's always a lot of cars there.
And Spitzer Road looks like it's coming along pretty well, right?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yep. We are very busy.
Yes.
In our department.
Considering what COVID-19 has done.
So, when COVID started, we have issued 1,500 building permits.
Really?
Last month in June, we did 500, and we did 20 swimming pools.
I believe that.
Last year, we had three.
Wow.
We did 20.
It's because people are at home now, they know what they want.
Yeah.
I've, I've thought about it, but for now, my four-foot-tall inflatable is, it's going to suffice, because I don't think I want the long-term maintenance.
I hear you, I hear you. But, yeah, we have been extremely busy. Ask Kim, she's processed a lot of permits.
You would not know that COVID-19 has affected our department at all. It's made it, I think we're busier than we've been in years.
Oh, wow.
Because people are home and they can see the projects they want done, so.
Okay. Any motions to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We were the same way with training.